We are taskmasters outside. Give me a second. Just give me a second. I don't know.
Hello?
Ike and Mike?
Alrighty, we're ready to roll.
See this clip is off the phone?
Yep, I'm off the phone.
You're gonna go before drama club.
Is he ready over there? Ready?
And then I'll go last of districts.
Call a meeting of the North Riding School Committee to order. First order of business as usual is public input. So if there's anybody in the audience right now who wishes to be heard on any item, please make yourself known and come up to the table here in the front. Seeing that, next we'll move to our student presentation and tonight we have Matt Wain. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Webster. It's been a busy week, couple of weeks at the high school. Last week, we had midterm exams. We had half-days from Wednesday to Friday. Also, last Friday, second quarter came to a close and today was the first day of the third quarter. Today also at the high school, a German consulate from, who's based in Boston, visited the high school. He gave a presentation about his position and relations to the United States to a World's History II class in the library. And when we were in there with our meeting with Mrs. Willis, there were a good amount of kids there. The Maskers Club is hosting their musical Nine to Five. Opening night is on Friday at 7:30. Shows can also be seen Saturday at 7:30, next Friday and Saturday at 7:30 as well. Last Friday, members of the Interact Club attended a E-Mark dance. Ryla, which is the Rotary Youth Leadership Awards, has selected five junior girl students to participate in their conference held in May at, I believe it is at Camp Rotary in Boxford. Student scheduling for current juniors begins tomorrow, can't believe that. The boys' ice hockey team won their home game at Burbank Ice Arena on Saturday against Masco. It was three to one victory. The boys' basketball team also had a away game at Linfield on Friday night. Their score was sixty-two to thirty-six, giving them their thirteenth win of the season and they're still undefeated, which is pretty amazing.
And Matt, if I can interject, it's always nice to destroy Linfield at basketball games.
It is, it is.
In any game.
What are you looking, in any sport we play in, it is always great to crush Linfield. Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, and they also qualified for the state tournament. Not only did the boys beat the Linfield, the girls beat them as well.
Choice is good.
Choice is good, it is. They came out with the win seventy-five to thirty-five, bring their record to eight and five, only needed two more wins to clinch the tournament spot. The boys and girls swimming team has their last meet tomorrow. Also, the boys and girls indoor track team has a meet on Wednesday. The JV boys and girls indoor track team had their cows meet on Friday. The wrestling team is still undefeated this season, I believe they're twenty or, twenty and oh, or twenty-one and oh?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, thank you. Yes, they did, thank you.
Thank you for the audience.
And coming up next week on Wednesday, John Morello is presenting an anti-bullion, anti-drug, and healthy choice program called "I Am Dirt", which is being presented to junior and senior students and it's being sponsored by the Parents Association. And one last point I want to touch upon is student council continues to work on their Books of Excellence, which I believe Kristen touched upon last meeting. Their due date is Friday and they're making great progress on it, from what I was told at the meeting today. And for my student work tonight, I have brought in a PowerPoint presentation that I did for my World's History II class. It was on Iwo Jima. We were all divided into groups. We were given different battles from World War II and we had to further investigate them and present them to the class, so my battle was on Iwo Jima. I learned so much more than what I hadn't learned. But I think the most interesting part, what I learned about is, was the flag raising. Most people think of that iconic flag raising on Mount Sarabache as the first flag raising, but it was actually the second flag raising. The first flag raising was, the flag was too small to be seen by ships, the United States ships off the coast of the island, so one of the generals recommended that they raise a second flag, it was bigger, so I thought that was probably one of the most significant parts of the battle and one of the interesting facts about it. So I'll pass that around.
Any questions for Matt? I like the fact that, nothing wrong with the sports, but tonight you started and you gave us non-sports stuff first, you gave us academic and other information and then went into the sports, so that was good.
Thank you.
This is an exciting time of year for, you're a junior, right?
Yes.
So the seniors are all, they've pretty much finished up their college application process and some of them have gotten in early action, but many of them are now...
This weekend, they're receiving the responses, yeah.
Right, so the responses are starting to come in, so it's an exciting time. And as for sports, just about every team is either at five hundred or well above five hundred. This is probably the most successful winter sports season I can remember in a long, long time. And to have two teams, one thirteen and oh, and the wrestling team, the boys' basketball team, the wrestling team twenty-one and oh for records is just outstanding.
With all due respect to Mr. Webster, I'd like to start with the important things, so go with the sports first.
I usually like the sports first, but I think it's good to mix it up once and while.
And it's always good to crush Linfield.
Exactly, exactly.
Always is.
Exactly. We had a lot of, we had several lean years where we weren't doing well against Linfield.
We're still trying to recover from the Thanksgiving Day football game, so...
Any other questions or comments for Matt?
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks a lot, and as you know, you can go home and get your homework done.
Do that.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Yep, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, next. Next, we have, we're here at the middle school tonight and we have, I like to say this is our home team presentation, because the middle school is the school committee's home base, it has been for a number of years, and has been our practice for, I think, the last five or six years. We go out and visit every school, but at the middle school, we don't have to visit because we're here every other week. So it feels like home to us, so we like to get a presentation from the middle school tonight. And is Principal O'Connell going to lead this, or?
All students run.
All students run. Okay, let's go.
Good evening, everyone. This is Nava Ventulo.
Holly Manzelli.
And Hannah Laidotes.
Today is Monday, January twenty-eighth, and it is day six on our rotation. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Student announcements for today.
The next meeting of the Writing Club will take place next Wednesday after school with Mrs. Todd. Sixth grade students need to be escorted by homeroom teachers to the cafeteria when called by the office today. Just a reminder that today is the first day of the third quarter and students should follow day six on their new schedules. Art Club meets today until 3:45 PM. Lunch cleanup this month. Grade six, Mrs. House. Grade seven, Ms. Pashoni. And grade eight, Mrs. Jones. Now for some guest speakers.
Good evening, everyone. This is Owen DeKleen with a new weekly puzzler. As the school year was progressing, a teacher was distressed that more and more of her students were beginning to tease and make fun of one another. She decided to do something about it. When they returned to the classroom after winter break, they saw a mirror on the wall with a sign next to it. When one of the students came to her crying about the name she had been called at recess, she sent the girl to the mirror with these directions. Read the sign quietly to yourself, repeat it over and over, gradually running the sounds together. Each time, look at yourself in the mirror. Soon, you will be smiling. Sure enough, when the student followed these directions, she came away smiling. Each time a student would come to the teacher feeling low, she would give them the same directions. Sometimes, they would have difficulty, so she would go over to read the sign with them. Eventually, each one would come away smiling. This is what the sign said. I Y Q Y Q R. Why did this little exercise help her students feel better about themselves? If you think you know the answer, write it on an index card along with your name and grade and turn it in to that green box at a convenient time.
Can you say those letters again?
Yes.
I know that you probably wouldn't normally do this, but we're older and we can't respond as quickly.
How long do we have to answer this question?
To the end of the middle school presentation. I Y Q Y Q R. Good luck.
Can we work in teams?
Hello, we are your Drama Club presidents.
Attention Drama Club members. A Practice for the Man Who Loved to Laugh will be meeting on Wednesday until four and a Practice for Chicago ERR will be meeting on Thursday this week until four instead of Friday due to the half-day.
To those fabulous Core students who auditioned for junior districts, great job at your audition. You should be proud of your dedication and hard work. And now Hannah Laidotes would like to talk about her once-in-a-lifetime experience at Project 351.
Hello, everyone. As you may know, my name is Hannah Laidotes and I am an eighth-grade student here at North Riding Middle School. I recently had the great honor of being nominated by my teachers and being selected by Mrs. O'Connell and Mr. Maloney to attend Project 351, a day of making friends and doing community service created three years ago by our Governor Deval Patrick. This experience has definitely changed me for good. I have never had a day full of such fun and a rewarding feeling that I was representing my community and giving back to a less fortunate one. Over two hundred students were driven in by buses from all over Massachusetts. We then arrived in Boston at the State House and were given a tour. We were then ushered into the Hall of Flags where we were given a very motivational speech by the governor. He told us that at our age, we can do anything and that we have a world of possibilities ahead of us. He also made us feel very special by emphasizing that we were the ones chosen from our town and our schools because we are great leaders. In the spirit of Martin Luther King Jr., he shared with us this quote, "All of us can be great because all of us can serve." After that, we were distributed to our service sites. There were groups going to the Boston Food Pantry, Pine Tree Inn, a homeless shelter, and Cradles to Crayons, but my site was the Henigan Elementary School just outside of Boston. There, my group and I painted murals for a hallway where kindergarten through second grade classes are held, or the Early Learning Center. This really hit home for me because a lot of the children there had special needs, as well as my sister is in second grade, so I know and want these ages to enjoy their school. One of the highlights of my day, however, was getting to have Governor Patrick and Nate Saunders from the Patriots help my new friend and I on our mural. After that, we were driven back to the State House where we shared our results with the governor and then had a dinner and a celebration. I will never forget this amazing and humbling experience as long as I live, and I know that my two new friends from Martha's Vineyard, Caroline and JJ, won't either.
Now Joey, Julia, Thomas, and Jamie would like to show you a project they created in their grade six science class.
Did you put your names?
Hi, I'm Julia Zachular.
Hi, I'm Julie McCracken.
Hi, I'm Talia McCracken.
Hi, I'm Joey Erpil.
And I'm Flora Wall. Nice to see you all.
I just wanted to talk briefly about our sixth grade pilot program for our science books. We are in our second year of piloting the PBIS series. It's project-based inquiry science. This book series actually uses a constructivist model where students do a lot of experimenting and activities and investigations first, then we learn about the science of it all, and then they use their experiences plus the science content to apply what they've learned to new situations. And we've had a lot of fun working with this pilot. We really love the books, this is Vicky and I. In sixth grade, we use five books. Two are earth science, one is physical science, and then two are life science. Although we see a lot of common themes throughout all five books, which allows us to revisit concepts and show how they apply to real life, it's been a lot of fun. So they're gonna talk to you about one of the challenges that they did back in October, just so you can get a little bit of a flavor of what is all about.
In the basketball court challenge, we were asked to recommend an erosion control method between our school at the top of the hill and a proposed basketball court at the bottom of the hill. The first thing we did was to take an erosion walk outside our own school yard to observe erosion in action. Then we did some research, looking at case studies to learn about how erosion happens in other locations, including ocean erosion, landslides, and historically with accounts of the Dust Bowl in the nineteen thirties.
Our next step was to test the two variables of slope and particle size on erosion. In our first simulation, we found that increased slope meant increased erosion. In our second simulation, we found that larger particles did not erode as easily as smaller particles.
Finally, we researched erosion control methods in five case studies. They looked at terracing materials using soil lifts or lifts made of compressed natural materials, planting native grasses and trees, and building lives on rock walls. We decided to use terracing with natural plantings in between the rock walls. Our final step was to build a model of this erosion control method to simulate the situation, and here is what our model looks like.
Sure. So what's supposed to happen if she's, as she's getting more water?
It looks like you've got a good job of controlling the erosion.
We probably could have had you fix the wall over at the little school. Now that I think about it, but go ahead. So are we supposed to see, because the water is controlled, which is kind of what you want, right?
Yeah, the terracing is supposed to take away the slope so none of the water or the soil could rush onto the court.
I don't have any water, so it's my classroom right now, so this is what we have to do in there, too.
Are you pushing your luck with this extra water?
Well, if they control the erosion, then it should run clear onto the court.
Oh, I see, clear, okay.
That's such a good job of containing the water.
I knew you were pushing your luck.
That's pretty good.
It's a lot of fun.
That's not bad, just a brief, a brief sweeping would get that little bit of dirt.
Yeah, that's good. Very good.
And you learned how to make that from the bookwork plus doing your tour and seeing what things were done around the school in terms of terracing and how to prevent erosion? That's pretty good.
Excellent.
Because I could never do that, so. We didn't do fun stuff like this when I was in school.
I can't run.
Good job.
Here are more examples of what other groups recommended for erosion control methods. This is one of the final presentations that a group made.
In Mrs. Vicky's class, they are doing the iPad initiative, so she had her students make these presentations and make video clips.
This is the Building Basketball Court Challenge starring Sarah D., Athany V., Kyle V., Sean U., and Manny.
You guys can put your problems, including everyone who isn't ready to correct.
Terracing soil lift and native grasses will work.
What is erosion?
Erosion is the movement of soil or other materials from one place to another.
How do you know terracing soil lifts and native grasses will work?
In Mrs. Vicky's class, we made a model and tested it out, and our results were evidence. This was also filmed in Sanibel, France, in case study of fifty-eight, the way that we had to...
Terracing and soil lift decrease the slope of water and water flow. Native grasses hold the soil up.
This erosion control method will prevent erosion at the basketball court.
If you can dig it, you can do it!
That's great, good job.
Thank you, excellent job. Thank you very much.
Owen DeKleen would now like to present his video video of the Alice program in Mrs. Dasho's class.
Everybody, I am Owen DeKleen. I, in computer class in seventh grade, we learned how to program using a program called Alice. It is, it's a 3D programmer. It may look like a cartoon, but it's a lot more complicated than that. We had to make a Greek myth.
Good evening. My name is Owen DeKleen and I am here to tell you the story of Echo Narcissus. Once upon a time, Katara, will you be my twenty million, four hundred fifty-six thousand, sixty-seventh wife? Please?
You're so sick!
Meanwhile, to keep Hera from finding Zeus, a nymph named Echo Destructor.
I'm waiting for Hera. I distract her every time she gets near Zeus and his friends. Zeus, Zeus, get over him as instant!
They married.
Now is my chance to distract her. Oh, Hera, honey, what a splendid, magnificent, stupacious, grand, impressive, imposing, superb, spectacular, resplendent, opulent, luxurious, deluxe, rich, fine, costly, expensive, lavish ornate, gorgeous, dazzling, elegant, regal, handsome, beautiful, steely, majestic, princely, noble, proud, palatial, plush, posh, swanky, spiffy, ritzied, splendorous, swank, spectacular, wonderful, impressive, imposing, awe-inspiring, awesome, amazing, stunning, breathtaking, incredible, sensational, fabulous, fantastic, brilliant, attractive, pretty, striking, arresting, prepossessing, fetching, hot, king, foxing, bodacious, comely, and fair dress you are wearing. Thank you, Echo dearest, have you seen Zeus? As a matter of fact, I have. He was that way. Thank you, Echo! Hours later, Hera realized Echo had tricked her. She immediately punished her. I shall punish you. You will only be out to repeat what other people say. My God, Echo! Echo continued echoing others and regretting her attempt. Hera said, one day, Echo spotted a beautiful youth, Narcissus, and instantly fell in love with him. Tomorrow, I am the noble hunter, Narcissus. Wow, that's the hottest hunter I've seen here. I think I'm in love. Narcissus went through the woods hunting until he found a beautiful pond. I am in love with my reflection. Will you love me? Love me, love me! Love you! Of course not! Of course not! Yeah, that's what I said. Get lost! Echo suffered for the rest of her life, which wasn't very long. She died of broken heart, but her voice was forever stuck in the mouth, echoing other people's calls. Hello! Narcissus too was distressed, for he could not touch the one he loved most, his reflection. Why, why don't you love me? Narcissus stayed at that pond for the rest of his life. He soon grew weak from starvation and a broken heart and died at that pond. In his place bloomed a single narcissus flower. In his place bloomed a single narcissus flower.
That was creative and a little weird.
Thanks.
You got up there right there saying in the paper that Amazon's paying programmers out of college between $100,000 and $200,000, so I think computer programming is probably a good thing to...
I think he's gonna end up writing for South Park or something.
Now Avery would like to share with you a robot she created in her robotics class.
This program was created by me and my group in our 6th grade robotics class. In robotics class, we had a challenge to do, uh, follow the leader. So what happens is two robots, they run, uh, programs and then they connect via Bluetooth so that they do the same thing. So like one, so both of them will go forward and then both of them will turn, so if you run the program, they should do that.
This is the Nestle Loop Block U-Street, the Follow the Leader Program.
So, we have done the clap-on clap-off challenge, which ma- and the program is quite similar to the clap-happer. You know that device that you plug into the wall, then plug in either your light or TV up into and you just clap to get it forward? Well, we've made a program on our robot that will do practically the same thing, and it'll make the robot move forward.
Just like the engineering design process, we made our first program and then we had to test it and test it again until we got it right.
Well, here we go. Go! 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 Stop!
Okay.
The threshold is very important.
That was...
This is what Lego Mindstorms looks like. Present the sound threshold, let 68, the second one being greater than 68. The first green block represents forward unlimited, the last green block represents stop.
My robot's name is CPQ. It uses touch sensors that allow it to clean its room while you're away. It is almost silent and has battery charge in 12 hours, has stady art rotating brooms and can clean up any mess or liquid, and has an easy ejectable container for easy cleanup.
My robot is called the Cleaner Upper and its purpose is to take out the trash. Its wide and thick wheels help it navigate on rough surfaces and the sound sensor on the back allows you to give it commands. The green and red buttons are the on and off buttons. The grips on its long arms help it easily grasp the trash can. If you don't want to use the sound sensor, you can use a remote control. The remote control allows you to direct it where to go and what to pick up and put down. It is made mostly out of metal and costs $50. Taking out the trash is now one last chore you need to do with my robot, the Cleaner Upper.
The sandwich's systematic. A sitter for those days when you're too tired to make your own. It has stady art new sound sensors that will actually get your order right. You can also pick if you want a toaster or not. As you can see, you can put your own chosen accessories to your sandwich. It goes up to two, connected to the cylinder, and gets sucked into the assembly box. Then it is planted into the toaster and it is toasted or not. Your choice. It is a new and revolutionary piece of equipment. The right price on this instrument is still being found. You can find it at your local Home Goods, probably around the price of $699.99.
Hello, this is Nathaniel Wilson here to talk about the best cleaning product on the market. It vacuums, it picks stuff up, it even mops if you get the stendo moppo arm. This is the Robo-Maid. The Robo-Maid is the best product on the market. It is better than even the ceiling cleaner 9000, which used to be the best product on the market. This thing is so good. I left my house for a week after I had a huge party and it cleaned everything up. I mean, everything. I even found the toilet clean and I don't even know how it did that. That was just amazifying to me. But this is one of the best products on the market. The Robo-Maid is made by a great inventor named Nathaniel Wilson. He thought of everything for this robot. It is a robot made. It will do anything you tell it to as long as it can, and it will.
That's great.
Emily Tsang and Owen DeQueen are here to represent the ABC Club Run by News O'Brian.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emily Tsang and I am president of the A3 class in 2013. I am also part of...
My name is Owen DeQueen.
We know you. You've already been here three times.
As a student, I believe it is important to have a club at school about ways to prevent bullying so that every student feels safe at school. We are one of the co-founders and developers of the ABC Anti-Bullying Committee. The ABC is a committee in NRMS that helps prevent bullying for students. The ABC creates videos that show students combating bullying and ways to prevent it from happening around the school and the town. This, this past week was no-name-calling week, so the ABC presented our first video to the students at NRMS, and the student council and I gave out bracelets to the students for no-name-calling week.
We created the video after school, a few weeks before no-name-calling week, which was last week, and we gathered a diverse cast so, of students from the school, and we filmed it in the school. It show, describes the three different kinds of bullying, cyberbullying, verbal bullying, and physical bullying, and it shows solutions for all of them.
Yeah, and also the video is up on the Nathaniel Wilson's website if you want to show anyone who like. And also, um, me and Owen are the directors of the video and I wrote the script.
I filmed it and edited it.
And I hope you guys enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, we, um, we all, we showed the video at like all the lunches, for the 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, so they all watched it and they thought it was incredible, so I hope you guys enjoy it too.
Hey, do you want to think about dropping a few pounds?
Yeah, so get out of here.
Hey, you okay?
Yeah.
You sure?
Mm-hmm. Hey, do you want to think about dropping a few pounds?
Yeah, so get out of here.
Hey, stop!
Why?
Because she has feelings just like you.
Thanks, Mom.
How'd you do that? Let's knock it off, we're just going to smoke it. Come on! Thank you, everyone. This is Owen DeQueen, the answer and winner of this week's puzzle. I'm going to go out now.
I put my name.
We had to figure out what these letters were saying.
Uh, no submission, yeah.
I said I'd like...
But I think you're right.
Hey. There are a few correct answers.
Yes.
So I need to randomly choose. Gold card.
A gold card?
Yes. And the winner is... Mrs. Willis.
Oh, wait a minute! This was rigged, I know it was rigged. This was fixed.
Did you try it right?
Yes.
What's the, what's the answer?
The answer is I Y Q Y Q R.
That was the question.
Sounds like I like you like you are.
I got it right at least.
I think Mrs. O'Connell tipped her off before...
I didn't tell anybody the answer.
No, Mrs. O'Connell, I think there was some collusion here.
Something's, something's going on there together all day here in this building.
Careful, this is verbal bullying. Great, good job, that's a good contest.
A gold card slipped, so you can get free snack in the cafeteria.
Well, it probably is appropriate that she won because she's here every day. That was a good contest, very good.
It was very good. Very well done.
That concludes our presentation. This has been Holly Manzelli, Nathan Tulo, and Hannah Lydotes. Have a great night!
I love when the students... That stuff is awesome. You know, Jerry and I can't remember, Mr. Betsy and I can't remember back to when we were in school at this age, but we all remember doing cool things like this, so...
I don't know.
And, and the programming and the robots. You all participated in the robots, is that the 6th grade or is that...
8th grade.
Sandy.
Mrs. Dasho's here tonight.
6th and 8th grade, that's it.
Robot and 8th.
Did a great job, great job.
And that, whoever did the robot, if you think about the trash, $50 is a bar, I'm signing under that right now.
Do you know whose daughter that is?
Oh, that's 6th grade or is that...
8th grade.
Sandy.
Mrs. Dasho's here tonight.
6th and 8th grade, that's it.
Robot and 8th. And Mrs. Ball, Ball.
Did a great job, great job.
And that, whoever did the robot, if you think about the trash, $50 is a bar, I'm signing under that right now.
Do you know whose daughter that is?
I don't really...
Can we get a deal?
For you, it's $100. Everybody else is $50.
I'll tell you, if anything happens to my wife, I'm gonna get one of them.
Well, thanks very much, and, uh, thanks for having us as guests every other week over the last many years, and we'll see you again next year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, we should, we should mention the artwork that's around...
It's nice.
That's all been done by students at the school. We have some great masks and we have these, I think they're nesting...
Kachina.
They were on exhibit in Ryers for the, uh, Christmas commerce.
Great.
Great.
They really did. Thank you, everyone. Yes, we don't need it. Would this rearrange for a minute?
That's good.
That was really very well done.
I get special credit tonight. Yeah, about, I don't know, 40 years ago.
Oh, that's right. I forgot that.
I can't believe they can remember all that stuff from October. They were able to resurrect it.
Jerry, those all signed or...
Yes, they're all signed.
Any of my Cliftos are all signed?
Yeah.
Thank you. It's, it's amazing though how come these kids are like 11, 12, 13 years old and they're so composed and confident. It's great.
That's very special, isn't it? Which one?
The one with Chris and Churchill there and Echo.
One of the strongest patients we have.
Just like a safety system. Okay, next item we're going to move to is, uh, we're going to discuss the, I believe it's the Mass Youth Survey, and I'll let Lieutenant Willis introduce our guests.
Thank you. Um, the purpose of this presentation this evening is to raise awareness around the 2013 Massachusetts Youth Health Survey to be administered this spring to a sample of students in our middle school and our high school. Joining me this evening for the presentation are Principal John Bernard from the high school, Principal Kathy O'Connell from the middle school, and our Director of Youth Services, Erica Hanson. Before I move forward, I would like to invite Erica... Before I move forward, I would like to invite Erica just to share a piece of news with the committee in terms of some of her career moves that she's making in the very near future. So Erica?
Thank you for having me this evening, I am actually resigning as Youth Services Director. I did start and have, currently working on many projects with the school department and many other town departments, but I have decided to move to New York City and work with hurricane and sandy victims, finding housing for them, so we are in the process of finding someone to transition into the youth services position so that these projects are held strong with youth services behind them.
Thank you Erica.
Okay.
And I'd just like to say to the committee that it has been my pleasure working with Erica for the two years that she's held this position. She has been engaged in so many important projects that have really improved the well-being of youth in this community, and most importantly, she's been involved in the Community Impact Team Board of Directors where she has, she submitted a grant and was funded fifty thousand dollars for improving the youth and the opportunities that are available to youth in this community. Now through NRC cuts, it was cut back to twenty-five thousand dollars mid-year, but I think that was quite an accomplishment for Erica to fill out this grant and submit it to the state and be awarded this amount of money on behalf of North Reading. So that's just one example of one of the many activities that Erica has been involved in, and I can say I for one will very much miss her as she moves on, but we do wish her well and we're very happy for her as she continues to search out what she would like to do with her life in the future, working with youth in this United States.
And I will miss you.
She's been wonderful to work with, and she's with us this evening because she has been working with us around thinking through how we can collect some information so that we can better plan to meet the needs of youth in this community. But I'd like to back up a little bit before I get there and talk to you about the background regarding this Massachusetts Youth Health Survey. In 2005, the Mass Department of Education and Mass Department of Public Health began a collaborative effort to coordinate surveys that they were administering that assess health behaviors and other health indicators of students in grades six through twelve. And so they came together in 2005 to create this Massachusetts Youth Health Survey, and the Center for Survey Research out of UMass Boston has been contracted to administer the surveys and assist with analyzing the results. So included in your packet for this evening was a copy of the letter informing me that the North Reading Middle School was selected to participate in this survey this spring. So coincidentally, the principals and the Director of Youth Services and I were discussing the collection of data from our middle school and high school students to assist us with the examination of our health curriculum, the support services that are offered, the staffing that we have in place, the kinds of student assemblies that we offer to our students, the parent speaker series that we'd like to launch for our parents to provide support with raising adolescents and youth in the community, and also to provide some data to allow us to seek out alternative funding to provide those resources that we need to be able to offer new programs and services for our students in the form of grants. So this work dovetails with the work of the Community Impact Team that I just mentioned, and the members that sit on the Board of the Directors for the Community Impact Team are members of the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Board of Selectmen, Parks and Recreation, the School Department, and Youth Services, and Erica and I do sit on this Board of Directors. So it was very interesting that all of this work that was already happening was able to continue based on this letter that we recently received. So the letter itself identifies the participation of two classrooms of students at the middle school, which is approximately fifty students, and when we received this letter, we saw an opportunity for the district, and we made contact with the coordinator of this program, and we've since received approval to include two hundred more participants from the middle school and another two hundred from the high school. The administration of this survey is free of charge to the school district, and it will allow us to establish baseline data for annual administration. This will be baseline data that will be added to over time, so we would be administering this survey annually to continue to assess how are we doing in meeting the needs of our students, and what kinds of programs and services do we need to meet some of what the trend editor is telling us we need to put into place in order to satisfy what students are giving to us through the surveys. So tonight I've asked the principals to describe the content of the surveys for you to give you an idea of what is contained in these surveys. So why don't we start with the middle school?
Sure.
And then we'll move on to the high schools. Mrs. O'Connell?
Sure, the middle school survey, the middle school youth health survey has ninety-three questions in it, I've read every question. It has about ten categories of questions. First category is basic background information, they're looking for gender, weight, height, age, race. The next category is lifestyle, and it talks about how much TV they watch, how many hours of video games, exercise, nutrition. Then they talk about, a little bit about how they feel about themselves, their self-image, any, there's a little bit about self-harm issues and some suicide questions. The next category is personal safety, particularly car safety, violence, any violence that they may be exposed to, bullying. And then it goes into family and peers, particularly perception of how their peers may feel about them, how, ask questions about their parents and how, and the perception of their parents, what they may think about their activities. And then there are two sections, one on alcohol usage and one on drugs. There is then a section on gambling and tobacco, and then a very small section on advertising that asks kids about the types of advertising that they may be exposed to, and then there, the last section is health, in which it just talks about general health, emotional health, learning issues they may have, and even dental health. So I'm very comfortable with all of the questions, I've read them all. Superintendent Willis didn't say that I just want to add is that there's an opt-out certainly for any parents who would choose not to want their children to participate in the survey, and that will be made available to all parents, and certainly we would honor opt-out requests. So I'm very comfortable with the survey, I think it's actually a great opportunity for us to have data to drive, as Superintendent Willis said, particularly our health curriculum at the middle school, to make sure we're covering everything that we should be covering to the depths that we need to for what our adolescents are being exposed to and the decisions that they're making every day. So that's the middle school survey, it's similar to the high school survey.
I think it is, I think Mrs. O'Connell and Mrs. Willis did a nice job capturing, I think, the essence of the survey, its content and the need for administering it here in North Reading. Like Mrs. O'Connell, I'm very comfortable with the survey for the high school, the subject areas are all the same as the middle school, I think it's fair to say that the questions vary because of the target population that will be administered, but the overarching subject headings are the same with one exception, there are four questions in the hundred-question survey for the high school on sexual behaviors. I think Mrs. O'Connell's point is a good one about the opt-out, that would be offered for families at the high school as well, and I think for both schools, the survey will be available for parent preview before it's administered, if they want to come into the school and examine the survey themselves, they will have the opportunity to do that, and that will be clearly communicated in the letter that goes out announcing that each school's participation in the administration. So I think this is a good step for us, it's something that we have been looking at for quite some time. Actually, the high school, we had investigated participating in the survey back some years ago, but we're told that it was something that a school needed to be selected for. So when the middle school was selected this year, we took the opportunity to see if the high school could be included, and I was glad to find out that we could be. So I think it's important that we do administer this, we're hoping for good student participation, I expect that we will have that, and I look forward to the results because I think it's important for us to, in a sense, kind of validate, we do a lot of programs, I think, across the district around helping students to make good decisions about their quality of life, but I think for me, it would be nice to know, are we targeting all of the areas that we need to target as we provide educational programs for students, so I'm hoping that this survey will assist us in identifying those.
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Bernard just said in terms of data collection and results, I think we've done a nice job targeting our programs and services for students, but it's important in this day and age to have data that supports that we are in fact providing what students need, and that we are evaluating the programs that we have in place, and we are using this data to either support the continuing of those services and programs, or the data will tell us that we're not meeting our target, and we need to improve what we're doing or change what we're doing. So again, the fifty middle school students that are included in the statewide survey will be kept separate from the results of the school samples. So we'll have two hundred students from the middle school participating in the district-based results, and two hundred from the high school. The surveys, as has been mentioned, are anonymous, and participation is voluntary, and all results are kept confidential. Parents will be notified officially and can opt-out. A copy of the survey will be available in each of the school offices for review, we have identified a timeline. The results will be returned in the fall of 2013, and a preliminary analysis will be conducted in the fall and early winter, and then a report to the school committee and to the public would be made in January of 2014. The state data that is collected will be aggregated, and the state will release its results in May of 2014. So we'll have an opportunity to compare our district results to the state results when those results come out in May of 2014. And again, this data-driven decision-making will be implemented by PAWS that will take a look at some of this data and use it to plan the bullying prevention and intervention programs that they are planning, by the Community Impact Team that is made up of, as I already mentioned, those members of the community that have a focus on prevention and intervention. This information will be used by the Wellness Committee as we take a look at the kinds of programs and services that are offered. The nutrition questions in particular will be used by our Food Service Department, and again, all of this information has implications for curriculum, support services, staffing, student and parent speaker series, and alternative funding sources in the form of grants. And as I mentioned to you, there was a timeline that we put together, I just want to share it with you, all of this will come out in writing, but for the purposes of tonight's presentation, we're just presenting it to you orally. So the timeline starts with this evening, a school committee presentation, parent notification will be made at the end of March, and then from that point, the survey review window will be March 26th to April 12th. I will be writing a transcript article, March 26th, it's my turn to write the weekly article, and this will be my focus for that article. Parent presentations will be made both at the middle school and the high school. Parent association for the middle school will be February 13th, for her school council it will be February 6th. At the high school, the presentation will take place for the parent association on February 14th, and for their school council on February 7th. The Wellness Committee, the Community Impact Team, the Community Impact Team of which, the Action Team of which I'm the chair for K-12 programs and services will all meet on February 5th, and will hear about this and have an opportunity to engage in a conversation. On February 25th, I will present it to the Superintendent's Advisory Council, and it will also be presented at the PAWS meeting on March 7th. So we're trying to involve as many parent associations with staff representation to get the word out, to answer questions, and then to implement in at the end of April. It'd be the Wednesday after April vacation, that's what we're proposing for both the collection of statewide data as well as district data. So now we're here to answer any questions or comments that you may have regarding this youth health survey.
I'm just curious, why would they limit it to a district with almost fourteen hundred students in the secondary schools, the middle school and the high school, two classrooms? I know we're doing two hundred, but they're only going to take two classrooms worth of data. Does that statistically translate into something that's representative of the entire secondary school population? It doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Well, I can tell you that in 2011, there were over three thousand students represented at the middle school and three thousand represented at the high school. So what they do in this Center for Research statistically determines what representation, random sample will be collected from the various sized school districts across the state, and then they pool all of that information into...
It just seems like a limited sampling from our district for sure.
It is at the statewide.
If we're doing two hundred, I think it should, I would hope that we could have even done more than that to get a better idea of, you know, what's going on. And the other thing I had, is there any questions specific to bullying? You mentioned bullying, but I didn't say anything in the...
Yes.
There are, okay.
Yes.
Yes, there are.
You know, when the state reports the results, do they also break down demographically the types of towns where the results are coming? In other words, you may get a lot different results from North Reading than you do from an urban center. Do they break that down at all?
No, I think that's all taken into consideration with the random sampling, but no, there is no demographic data. What will come out will be a glossy report that looks like this, the last administration of this, it's administered every two years, so the last administration was in 2011, the report came out in May of 2012, and what you will see, they do talk about demographics in terms of race or ethnicity, but not socioeconomic status. And then it will talk about results based on high school students because a lot of the questions are similar on the middle school survey as well as the high school survey. So you'll see that representation of results over time, they're using five years' worth of data to give you statewide results, and this is what you'll see at the statewide level. For our district, it will be baseline data, and you know, you need a minimum of three years' worth of data to begin to start to identify whether any trends exist.
We have to pay to compile our own data and develop reports, or will the state do that for us also?
Well, the grant that Erica procured, the grant funding, does have an allocation for evaluation of results. The administration isn't going to cost us any money and actually will receive raw data. The analysis is what we would pay to have an evaluator take a look at. Really, the benefit though of having an evaluator take a look at it is over multiple years. The first year of baseline data is establishing just that, so I feel like the school district can do that analysis without any outside assistance. But going forward, when you start building trend analysis, it is important to bring in an outside evaluator, plus it keeps the data as unbiased as possible, you know, keeping it separate from a district person analyzing it.
That was my other question, going forward, we'll have to administer this ourselves, or will the state continue to administer it for us?
Well, we will have access to a copy of this survey, so we will be able to use the same survey for multiple years, and we'll keep our eyes open for when the state changes their survey and determine whether or not we want to add a question or two that mirrors any changes at the state. But for the purposes of comparability, we want to be using the same questions over time in order to assess trends.
The other suggestion I would make is, we might want to put questions online on high school and the, can we do that, high school and middle school websites?
Let me tell you this, we also met with a representative from the Reading Public School District, his name is Tom Zaya, who has been administering this survey or overseeing the administration of this survey for the last nine years, and we wanted to learn from somebody that has a lot of experience doing this, because they have a coalition in Reading that really takes a look at this data as our CIT will, and makes some decisions around the data that's collected, and they talked about posting it online, and they decided not to. They decided that the survey itself would be kept in district so that students would answer it as they come through the school district as opposed to putting it online. And we agree.
No, I'm talking about so parents could, if parents wanted to go just to see the questions.
But then it's open to the world. So we want to be able to invite parents in, and there is a process that Tom shared with us, that the survey is actually kept in a binder, parents come in and take a look at it, there's a sign-in and a sign-out sheet so that we keep track of who's had a chance to see the questions, and there's a certain level of, not confidentiality around it, but I think it's accountability, making sure that we're protecting the assessment, and that it's not compromised in any way, shape, or form.
Before the kids see it.
Before the students see it. But good question, because we had the same question, why don't we put it up online?
It sounds like a good program, and it sounds also like they have some idea that they're getting a reasonable sampling in the process. Meant a hundred that I would normally think of from a state standpoint, but it certainly meets the hundred standard here in town, and that ought to be pretty good.
No, we've done some surveys in the past, not, I don't know if it's this type of survey. survey.
My Voice Survey.
Right. Are there any results that are comparable from that to this that we'll be able to go back and look at?
Were there question types and categories that are similar?
I think that was, is more about school culture.
Right.
And this is about health and health behaviors. But I think we might, I mean, we'll definitely take a look at the results.
It might be interesting to take a look at the results back then and if there are some similar questions to see if the answers, you know, if the percentages are consistent with what we see in this.
It definitely makes sense to weigh all data collected when making decisions.
See if you have any correlation.
Right. Anything else? Okay, great, sounds good.
Very good. Thank you. We'll keep you posted and you will have a presentation next January.
Okay.
On the results.
Thank you.
So thank you everyone.
Good luck, Erica.
Yep, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I think John is going to...
Set up next one.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Stay there?
Stay there, John.
Okay.
The next item we'll move to is a discussion regarding assistant varsity coaching positions for a couple of sports at the high school. And I believe at this time, we're going to let Mr. Venetia take the lead on this.
Well, this is something we've been discussing at the Athletic Subcommittee for some time, which John's a member, I'm a member, the superintendent's a member. The Athletic Director, Dave Johnson, I think had originally come to us with a proposal to hire assistant coaches for several sports, two of them being in the spring, and that's varsity baseball and varsity softball. The question was whether or not we would have the funding or the inclination to do it, but whether we'd have the funding for the current fiscal year because obviously the spring season is within FY13 and then if not, whether we would consider it for the following fiscal year. I haven't done any scientific surveys as to the KPM League, as to how many teams have an assistant coach, but just, you know, anecdotally from going to games and stuff, I've seen that a number of teams have, some of them more than just the one coach on the field. And our baseball team and our softball team, for as long as I can remember, have had just the head coach and no assistant, either for practice or for games, obviously. The cost is approximately $4,000 for each position. If we were to do the two assistant coaches in the spring, it would be approximately $8,000.
Do you want to kind of explain the issues that pop up because we don't have assistant coaches either in game or even, you know, if a coach can't make it or...
I think some of the obvious ones is if a coach couldn't for some reason make a game or make a practice, there's not an assistant. Now, that's not to say that the varsity teams don't have coaches for the varsity teams. I suppose on occasion, they might have to practice together and that one coach would assume those responsibilities. But just for the purposes of even running a practice, you know, there's just one coach at games. The coach can only be in one place at a time. And softball, a lot of times the head coach goes out to coach third base and there's nobody sitting on the bench to make substitutions and things of that nature. They do an excellent job, obviously, if you look at the success of our baseball team and our softball team. They've done a tremendous job. But I, you know, I'm carrying this to the committee based on the recommendation of the Athletic Director and it seems to make sense to have the second person involved. The other thing is both of the coaches for those two teams are, you know, been here a long time. I hope they never retire, to be honest with you. But I think in the future that that could happen and it may make some sense to either groom a successor or to have somebody there to assist a new head coach if and when they come in. So that's, I'm sure John had something to add.
I think Dave, in his original presentation to the Athletic Subcommittee, and by the way, I support this recommendation as the principle. I think Dave uses the phrase contest management. You know, I think there's a certain level of preserving an effective contest, an effective game. You know, as Mr. Venetia said, softball's a good example. Our head coach is out coaching third base. There's nobody on the bench. You know, I don't think that's the best situation. Our enrollment is up. Our participation rates are up significantly and we anticipate them to continue. So I think the three levels at both sports, I think is absolutely going to continue in the foreseeable future. And I think that's another reason to support is that the large number of students, so three programs, three coaches is limited.
I also support the idea. Of course, the question always comes down to money. One of the things, and Carl, I'm sure you don't have exact numbers, but I know there's been a pretty good increase in sports participation this year. We've seen a corresponding increase in the fees that we've collected?
Yes, we have. As Mr. Bernard indicated, I believe that this user fee increases this year over last year amount to about $10,000. Of course, we do have other expenses that we hadn't anticipated this year in athletics, that those being the tennis courts. So we are going to be challenged this spring. I believe that the contract we're signing is $17,000 for Middleton for that. But certainly, the enrollment increase would suggest a favorable report on this proposal.
And possibly continued enrollment increase in the spring, which would, my concern is that having attended a number of these games every spring, I do see it as an issue. There's oftentimes, sometimes there's volunteers that are there helping out the coaches, but that's not an ideal situation. You'd like to have someone who's part of the system, who can contribute on a regular basis, help run practices, and help manage games.
I think these are two, Mr. Chairman, the two most critical positions for right now. There are other coaching positions as well that we'll have to consider for maybe next fiscal year.
The other thing I would add is we haven't added a whole lot to our athletic budget over the years, at least the amount of money that the appropriation covers. We've continued to try, I know it's not 50/50 right now, but we try to run it on a 50/50 basis, percentage basis in terms of revolving fund and appropriation.
Revolving fund meaning user fees.
User fees, right. I think the appropriation is a little bit higher now in terms of percentage. But I would strongly support this and I'd like to do it this year if we could out of our existing budget. But again, Carl, you'd have to let us know if you thought that's feasible.
I think it is.
Okay. That would, you know, that would be great again.
That would be.
It's, we've had tremendous success with our, as we said it earlier tonight, with our athletic teams dating back to last spring and moving forward. And I think it makes some sense to move forward on this.
If we were to approve this, would it get, what would be the process of finding coaches, John?
It would go through the normal posting process, advertising. I think that, you know, part of why we're bringing it up tonight is so that we can do that in anticipation of receiving a favorable vote tonight was that we would be in a position to advertise and interview for those two positions for the spring season. So we would go through the normal posting interview and recommendation process.
Any questions, comments?
How does this affect our pay forward? Now, how do we purchase all of the goods? You know, we have that kind of extra cash available to us. Is that where you were planning on?
Yes. Well, you know, each year, we always hope to carry forward funds into the future year. And these funds, we either come from one of two sources, either from a reduction of what we do carry forward next year or more hopefully, more preferably, what I would call returns from existing accounts that aren't expended. You know, we, whether it's heating, lighting, legal expenses, something of that nature, generally, when we reach the month of March and April, we can uncover funds that appear not to be spent. So that would be the likely area source right there.
Correct me, John, but I think all of our coaching positions are one-year contract, are one-season contracts. So it's not like they're going to roll over, they're going to be contractually bound.
Right.
If we don't have the funds in the next fiscal year budget, then we don't have to appropriate the money to...
You are correct.
Yep.
So Mr. Chairman, the superintendent recommends, and if the committee would make a motion, we would vote these?
Yeah, I'd make a motion. I guess it would be because it's budgetary to allocate funds approximately $8,000 for the purposes of hiring an assistant varsity, an assistant softball coach and baseball coach for the spring season.
A second. Any further discussion? Harry Nunn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Keep that basketball team going. Seven more to go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I guess we'll finish off new business now, right?
Yes.
With what we've all been waiting for. The superintendent is going to tell us how we're going to evaluate her this year. Superintendent?
Yes, as you know...
The new system.
Massachusetts has implemented a new educator evaluation system. There is an evaluation subcommittee of the school committee that has been actively participating in reviewing this new educator evaluation system model and talking about how we might move this process forward, starting with me. And so the members of the educator evaluation subcommittee recommend to begin the process this school year and to continue it over the course of the next school year. If you open up the green folder that I distributed to you, we're looking at the right-hand side of the packet. I'd like to take you through what the educator evaluation system is, the timeline for implementation, roles and responsibilities, and some documents that I've included in the left-hand side for your review that will be used to conduct my evaluation moving forward if this is something that members of the committee agree to this evening. We do have to implement this process. What's different is we're suggesting as the educator, as the evaluation subcommittee, that it begin tonight. So you can see the Massachusetts Model System for Educator Evaluation is an annual cycle that includes five steps. And I've outlined those steps for you. Step one is self-assessment where the superintendent must propose a minimum of two goals in each of these two categories, one to improve professional practice, the other to improve student learning. Step two is analysis, goal-setting, and plan development. And this is where the review of proposed goals, key strategies, benchmarks of progress take place during a public meeting. And the school committee is involved in approving the goals and developing with the superintendent two to four district improvement goals along with key strategies and benchmarks. And these all constitute what's called the superintendent's annual plan. Step three is to implement the plan and collect evidence. I think that's self-explanatory. Step four is a mid-cycle goals review where I prepare progress report toward each goal and performance against the standards. And I present that during a public meeting and then you provide input to me. And step five is an end-of-cycle and summative evaluation report where I prepare an end-of-the-cycle report on the progress toward each goal, similar to the mid-cycle review. Then you each complete individual performance reviews. The chair compiles those individual reviews and drafts a summative evaluation report. And then the committee reviews the draft, discusses proposed revisions, and adopts a final end-of-cycle summative evaluation report, all done at a public meeting. The page behind that top page is a proposed pilot implementation timeline. So the evaluation subcommittee and I are proposing that, as you can see at tonight's committee meeting, we're presenting an overview, process, and timeline. Step one, the self-assessment, would be completed February of this school year. The analysis, goal-setting, and plan development would be completed March of 2013. We would implement the plan and I would begin to collect evidence from March through December. In December, we would conduct the mid-cycle goals review. And then in June of 2014, the end-of-cycle and summative evaluation report would be completed. The pages behind this timeline are excerpt from the Massachusetts Model System for Educator Evaluation, Part Four, the Implementation Guide for Superintendent Evaluation. I provided an excerpt for you this evening because I didn't want to run off, I think I brought a copy. The entire Part Four, I believe, is 83 pages long. So I just provided an excerpt for you about roles and responsibilities. The members of the evaluation subcommittee do have the entire Part Four at their disposal and have reviewed it copiously. What we are talking about right now are the school committee responsibilities. I just want to draw our attention to these because part of this process requires a training. So we envision this training to be embedded in the presentations that will be made to you over this pilot implementation year so that we're not commencing one large training for you, but it's embedded in the context of actually implementing the evaluation tool. So first and foremost, you need to know and understand the rubric. You need to participate in either online or in-person training and we're interpreting what we're doing now as training. The school committee chair will oversee the evaluation process. The, this process, the school committee will identify the superintendent's strengths and areas for improvement and make recommendations. The school committee will ensure that the goals and actions detailed in the annual plan are challenging, measurable, and focused on high priority needs of the district students. And the school committee chair will lead the mid-cycle goals review meeting and the end-of-cycle summative evaluation meeting. And the school committee ensures that the end-of-cycle summative evaluation report contains accurate information. And then the next page goes through what the superintendent's responsibilities are. And again, to know and understand the rubric, to participate in training. And I just want to let you know that I've been through DESE trainings, trainings that are provided by my own professional organization, the Mass Association of School Superintendents. I went to a training in the fall that was provided by the Mass Association of School Committees at their annual conference. And our own school district is currently involved in providing trainings for all evaluators. There are six modules that are posted to the school, to the DESE website, and we are facilitating those trainings now with our administrators. We've already participated in several. We have four more to go. So I can tell you that we are thoroughly immersed in training on the new educator evaluation system and I participate in all of them. Then you can see that all the other responsibilities of my preparing for goal-setting and plan-development have been outlined. And then I have to meet with you and implement and then prepare a mid-cycle report, an end-of-cycle report, and I have to actively participate in the end-of-cycle evaluation meeting, all done in public. In addition, I included Appendix F, what makes a SMART goal SMART. S-M-A-R-T is an acronym for Specific and Strategic, Measurable, Action-Oriented, Rigorous, Realistic, and Results-Focused and Timed and Tracked. And you can see all of the information that's provided in this advisory. And on the back of that, it really goes into a little more narrative around what each of those letters of the acronym mean. Appendix J was referenced in the school committee responsibilities. And this is a ruling by the Attorney General as to how do the open meaning and public records laws affect the superintendent's evaluation process. So there are four questions here that are listed on this page with a pretty well-rounded answers to each of these questions. And it all talks and provides guidance as to what needs to occur in open session regarding the superintendent's evaluation. Then on the left-hand side of this packet, you have a copy of the rubric that needs to be used when conducting this evaluation. It is an 18-page rubric that coincides with the standards that every educator involved in this new evaluation system needs to adhere to. The standards are a little different for administrators than they are for teachers, but the standards that make up my evaluation are focused on instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And under each of those standards are indicators and then under each of those indicators are specific elements. So all of these rubrics would be used to provide a rating for my performance on each of these standards. You can see that the rubric mirrors similarly what you've experienced in your own self-evaluation as a school committee that you initiated two years ago.
Right.
So using a rubric is not new for this particular school committee. For many other school committees, it will be a new process. What I also provided for you was just a one-page overview of what a mid-cycle progress report looks like. This will be multiple pages, but I just wanted you to see what that looks like. And then the end-of-cycle summative evaluation report for the superintendent is included in your packet. This is the actual document that you will fill out, but of course, it will be populated with information that I provide to you and that you review during the goal-setting process. Questions?
First, I'd say it's not much different from what we've already been doing and have been doing for a number of years with our superintendents. It's just more formal and it may take us a little more time, which is something that usually happens when the state gets involved. And I don't see much difference here at all in what we've done before. And I think it'll be, the one thing, I don't know if you mentioned this, it's an 18-month process this time because we're piloting it now. time because we're piloting it now. So, it'll be an annual process, but we don't have to begin implementing it until fiscal 2015, fourteen-fifteen, fourteen-fifteen school year, correct?
This coming school year, we do need to implement, thirteen-fourteen.
But as a pilot.
Well, we are, it is, it is an actual implementation for this school district, but we're looking at this first year as a pilot. We're in negotiations right now with our teachers, so we're, we're all going to be learning the implementation all together at the same time.
Right, in the thirteen-fourteen.
But starting now, for me, will provide an opportunity for our educators to see what it's like to go through the process before they actually implement in the fall.
The one question that I have is because we're doing this over eighteen months, should we have a six-month, a twelve-month? Instead of just a nine-month review, should we have a six, a twelve, and then the final?
I would be happy to do whatever you feel.
I'm just wondering, if we have a, say we had a six-month, I don't want to wait nine months to do a progress check. Not that this is going to be anything, but so I think six, twelve, eighteen would make sense. I mean, you can think about that, and we can decide that later. We don't have to decide that tonight.
Sure. I, I think that makes sense, though, Mr. Webster, as far as the check-in times, and it gives us more practice.
As Cliff says, we'll get used to it. We have to do it every six months anyway, once we get into the annual.
So, I'll adjust that timeline.
Okay.
I'm sure for many school districts, this is going to be a quantum leap. For us, it's a, it's a slightly different format, but it's just the formatting. We've been doing the, the whole thing with slightly different format.
But also, I was going to mention, in terms of the training, we've almost been pre-trained because of what we've already done. And as you said, we've already done two years of the self-evaluation.
That's correct.
That was the other thing I wanted to ask you. When Cliff and I were meeting with you on this back a couple of weeks ago, you had shown us a self-evaluation form that seemed much shorter
Yes.
than the form we had been using. Have you got any?
I'm in the process of obtaining copies of that for the committee to share with the committee, so that we can take a look at that.
For the committee members, it was, you know how long that, this was a much easier form to fill out. And it wasn't as, there were a lot of answers and questions, and the previous one we were using, it was, some of them weren't appropriate for the school committee to answer. It seemed like it was more focused on the school committee, and it would allow us to better self-evaluate, so.
So, we'll bring that forward in the very near future.
So, we're going from a more complicated to a simpler process instead of the other way around.
Any, any other questions or comments on this?
Just for point of clarification, so, in six months, we'll do a mid-cycle review, and in twelve months, we'll do a mid-cycle review, and then in eighteen months, we'll do the end of the year.
Right. Although, if we call each of them a mid-cycle review, they might question our math skills. We might...
A third-cycle review, or a point-three-three cycle review? Whatever you want to call it. A review.
A review, yes. Progress, a status.
A progress review.
Just tell them it's differential equations and take care of everything.
Do we have to vote on this, or do we just?
You don't have a choice.
No, I think we just have to do it. We have to do it.
We have to do it, but if it's, if it, if it's approved by the committee, it is taking this process into eighteen months and starting it earlier, but starting it this year, moving into, through next year.
Do you want to motion, Mr. Chairman, or not?
Sure.
Yeah, why don't you just make a motion to, just, we're going to do it on, well, we're going to, the first time around, we're going to do it on an eighteen-month basis, and then we'll go to an annual basis.
Okay. So, move to implement Massachusetts Model System for Educational Evaluation for the superintendent on an eighteen-month trial basis, is that what it is?
Yes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Done new business, so let's skip back up to continued business. We actually had a meeting, we were at, several of us were at the selectmen's meeting earlier tonight, and that pertains to the MSB, SSBC update, and I'll let Mrs. Willis take it from there.
Thank you. On January fifteenth, the SSBC held in a butters meeting in the lodge group room at the middle school from 5:30 to 8:15 p.m., and approximately eighty people were in attendance. Board of Selectmen Chair Sean Delaney did facilitate the meeting. We had our representatives from our architect firm, the landscape designer, our owners' project manager, and construction managers present to provide an overview of the project to date and to provide a preview into the work to be completed in the near future. The primary concern of the butters included the elimination of trees along their property line, as well as an access route for student walkers to the middle school at the beginning and at the end of the school day. As I mentioned, Mr. Delaney, as well as Mr. Venezia, answered most of the questions on behalf of the Secondary School Building Committee. But following this meeting, the SSBC discussed strategies to continue to improve our relationship with the butters, and they decided to establish subcommittees that will focus on the oversight of specific aspects of this project. At that time, we also revisited placement of roof screens in front of equipment on the middle school roof, and after deliberation, the SSBC voted not to install roof screens again on the middle school roof, and the meeting adjourned at approximately 9:00 p.m. Another SSBC meeting was held on January twenty-second from 5:30 to 6:30, and at this time, the OPM provided an update on additional meetings held with the butters and the efforts made to update contract, the contact information of seventy-seven butters around this project to maintain frequent communication regarding the progress of the project. The OPM informed the committee that a clerk of the works will be on site, will be on site this week, for three days a week at this stage of the project, and then moved to full-time around April first of this year. At this meeting, we did identify the five subcommittees that I had previously referred to, and those five subcommittees and their members were identified. The subcommittees are education, finance, the butters, town department liaisons, and the weekly construction meeting representatives. The schedule of meetings was reviewed, and the SSBC voted to go before a joint meeting of the board and the of selectmen and the school committee to schedule a special town meeting and special election to request additional funds for the building project. That meeting took place this evening. Three informational forums regarding the status of the building project will be held prior to the special town meeting. The dates of the meetings are tomorrow evening, Tuesday, January twenty-ninth, beginning at 7:00 p.m., February twenty-eighth, beginning at 7:00 p.m., and March fourteenth. The meetings, all of the meetings will be held in the high school auditorium. And at this time, I would like to make reference to what was voted at the school committee meeting, the date for the special town meeting, uh, selectmen's meeting, I'm sorry. The date for the special town meeting will be Monday, March eighteenth, and the date for the special election will be Friday, March twenty-second. And I would like to turn this over to the chair of the school committee now for the school committee to take a vote.
Yeah, I think it's important that we take a vote on, I guess, supporting the vote of the selectmen tonight, since they've already made that vote. Again, my, my feeling about this is that it's important that we give the townspeople the chance to make this decision. It shouldn't be a decision made by, you know, five school committee members, or the SSBC, or the Board of Selectmen. It's, it should go back to the town. And I'm hoping that the townspeople take the opportunity to attend these meetings, the first of which, as the superintendent said, will be tomorrow night at seven. As the meetings move along, there will be more information, especially financial information, but if you attend tomorrow night, you'll hear why we're where we, where we are, and you'll hear what we've done to stay within the budget, and you'll also hear us talk about the items that we're recommending be put back into the school that, right now, have been cut from the school project, and there are a number of them. And I just think it's important that people attend these meetings. There's a lot of rumors going around. There's a lot of accusations. There's a lot of misfacts and misstatements, and if you want to get the accurate information, come to the meeting tomorrow night. Jerry, you want to?
Yeah, I would just add, too, that the selectmen were unanimous in
That's right.
in asking for the special, or approving the special election, I'm sorry, the special town meeting and special election. They didn't really focus on the merits of it. They just said that the public has the right to, to be able to vote on this, and that was their, the direction they took. So, if you want, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to support and endorse the selectmen's vote to schedule a special town meeting and special election for the purpose of requesting additional funding for the secondary school building project.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Cliff, you want to add anything? You're also a member of the SSBC.
No, I think it's a very important thing that we move ahead with this, and people get information, the facts on the, on the matter, and I think with that, they'll see the merits and move ahead.
Michael, maybe? Okay. We have a motion and a second? No further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous.
Okay. And at that January twenty-second, Secondary School Building Committee, at 6:30, a motion was made to enter into executive session for the purpose of contract review and potential litigation, because to do so in open session could have a negative impact on the towns, the schools, and the SSBC. And then, the motion also included permission to allow any members of the Board of Selectmen or the school committee that are not members of the SSB to attend the executive session. And on Monday, March eleventh, 2013, a joint Board of Selectmen, school committee, and Secondary School Building Committee meeting will be held in the town hall beginning at 7:00 p.m. to share the guaranteed maximum price for the building project.
And I just wanted to add to that. I think the SSBC has made a wise decision in that we're moving ahead with the project. The school's going to be built, whether it's with the existing budget we have or if we get additional money, because stopping it would actually cost us more money. And I think the SSBC has made a smart decision to not provide specific numbers to the community until we have this greatest maximum price, guaranteed maximum price on March eleventh. I do believe, Selectman Delaney said tonight, Selectman Chairman Delaney said that at the February twenty-eighth information hearing, it is fully expected that we will have a range of what we will be looking for at the special town meeting and the town election, but on March eleventh, we will have the
The number.
GMP. That means that within, with the current scope of the project, that price cannot be exceeded. So, whatever price we get that night will be the price of the project as currently planned. Anybody else want to talk about the GMP, or?
The only thing I want to add is I want to thank Mr. Delaney. He did a great job of handling the butters' meeting. He volunteered to be the liaison with the butters, and he's put in a great deal of time and effort dealing with that situation, and rightfully so, and I just want to thank him on behalf of the school committee for his effort.
And I will add that, you know, I know that, you know, the butters were extremely upset with the tree cutting, and I think that the SSBC is doing as much as it can and is cooperating fully with the butters, you know, is going as far as taking pictures from, I believe, from the butters' yards to see what they see, to help plan what kind of landscaping we can put there in the future to begin to return the area to what it looked like prior to the trees being removed. And I think that we're, we're doing, I think, as much as we can to help the butters and return the area to as close to the previous view as they had.
I think one of the things that is most difficult is to, to be in a butter next to a construction project. Because the construction takes place as a lot of, of things that are on the other side of the fence that are not permanent. They're, they're temporary. Big stacks of, of trees, or piles of materials, soil piled real high, as we have here, in trailers, construction trailers, equipment moving, a lot of bare earth. Just in, just in general, it's not fun living next to a construction project. But all of us are the beneficiaries of a construction project. Our homes were a construction project at one time, and sometimes our whole development that we're, that our homes are in was a construction project at some time, and, and those all had neighbors who were affected by that. And all of that will go away, and the resulting project will actually be very attractive. And when all of the landscaping is done, and the new earth forms are made, they will all look attractive. And I think that that endpoint is the hard thing to imagine. I, I went through a project in my own backyard last year where we had sixty, sixty yards of sand piled in my backyard, no lawn, tracking sand in every day, on for months and months, and it was a mess. And now, it's, it's lawn and shrubs and looks good again. So, all of these things are passing, and I think it's important to keep that perspective as an about. The end product will be very attractive and a real addition to the, to the community. I think we'll all be very proud of it when it's completed.
One thing I'll add, and I wouldn't recommend doing it during the school day, but if you have a chance to come up on the weekend or after school and take a look at the site preparation that's going on for the high school classroom building, which is on the slope that sits between the current middle school and the current high school, it's actually pretty cool, and I believe they're going to start putting the foundation in this week.
This week.
So...
Concrete, concrete.
Concrete this week, and steel probably not too far behind, I would think.
Oh, a little bit, but...
Not too far.
Not too far.
And, and the view, it's, it is, as Mr. Bauer said, it's going to be a beautiful project, and the view, the, the high school classroom building is going to overlook the turf field, and the view from there is, it goes, it goes on forever, it seems.
For anyone coming up on the site, as you come up the road toward the school, up Sherman Road, and you're, it's sort of the extension from Sherman Road, and you look off to your right, you know, toward the high school, and there's a silt fence line, a row of bales of hay, and a silt fence, and that is the outer edge of where the, the new high school will be located, and that's where they're putting the foundations in. And that's the level of the first floor of the, of the new high school. And when you picture a three-story structure on top of that, in that location, and then imagine what that looks like from Park Street, and you'll, you'll get the, a little bit of the idea of just how much of an edifice this is going to be. Very, very nice structure.
Any other comments? Great. Okay, next, I actually, I joked a little earlier with our middle school students and their, their science project, but what they were doing actually pertained to our second-agenda item under continued business, which is the little school retaining wall, and I think we have a, a good, solid update tonight from Mr. Nelson.
Sure. Given some of the issues that I'm about to tell you about, we could have used those middle school children helping us through. The good news is we have some solutions, but the bad news has been the last sixty days, we have not made the progress that we had expected to make, and it was based on all administrative and legal issues. To summarize it briefly, the town of North Reading has certain requirements for how much insurance a contractor must have, and that contractor must issue to the town a certificate of insurance proving the limits of the liability that they carry. In addition, the town of North Reading has certain requirements for performance bonds. Those are bonds that contractors post to assure completion of their project. And the contractor that we have selected, who submitted the lowest bid, it took a fair amount of negotiation and, and work to ensure that that contractor carried the sufficient insurance and performance bonds to satisfy the town of North Reading's thresholds. With a great deal of assistance from town administrator Greg Belukonis, who got involved in this process, we finally, Friday at noon time, secured the necessary information from the contractor to fulfill the requirements previously stated. So, we have, that's been what's happening for a couple of months. That's a very brief overview of a lot of time and effort that has taken place in recent months. We're scheduling a meeting with the contractor this week now to determine the process of work that needs to be completed. Orally, the contractor's told us that he feels that there's still no issue with completion of this project prior to the onset of the softball season. You know, even though the ground is frozen, we know from experience by looking out the window, that work can continue even with these temperatures. So, I'll have more specific information at our next meeting, hopefully, that lays out what's going to happen and when with dates, but I can report to the committee that all is a go at this time.
And we came within the budget, budget, the amount approved at the town meeting?
Yes. Yes, we're under that budget. Yes. Yes, we're under that budget. And there are no financial difficulties whatsoever. And contractors, you know, once we sign the contract with the contractor, the work must be done under those financial guidelines.
Okay. Any other questions? That's good news. Thanks, Carl. Hit bills and payroll?
Thank you. Have those.
We will set minutes. The executive session, this is an old one, so we must have edited this. It's from November 19th, 2012. We must have made some changes. No? Okay. Okay, Superintendent.
Just took a little bit of time to get it to you.
I read through these. I had no problem, so I accept a motion to approve these.
So moved.
Second?
Further discussion? Hearing none. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We have the executive session on December 3rd.
Mm-hmm.
Again, I read through these. I saw no issues. Accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second?
Further discussion? Hearing none. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Oh, 4-0. Unanimous about 4-0. And then the open session meeting on January 14th. Again, I read through all of these. I found no issues at all, so I would take motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Further discussion? Hearing none. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Budget update? We don't have one tonight, correct? Or do we?
No, we don't.
We don't.
But I was just asking the Director of Finance and Operation to provide a brief overview of the recently released Governor's Budget-
Oh, right, right, right.
-preliminary budget and local aid.
Okay.
As the committee knows, the process for FY14 budget at the state level really began last week with the Governor's House One submission. And the process is now underway. The highlights of the budget that the Governor described last week are as follows. To begin with, there is, he's proposing an increase in the unrestricted local aid, which will have negligible effect in North Reading. The increase is about $1,500 that would take place under that proposal. He's also recommending an increase in Chapter 70, yet the North Reading formula that's in place will only benefit North Reading by the amount of about $63,000. So even at the starting blocks, the funds available to North Reading with these two proposals are really negligible in the scheme of things. There are fairly important changes to the Chapter 70 formula. And briefly, those would include the following. Because of the Governor's emphasis on preschool education, he wishes to include regular education students who attend pre-K. Presently, of course, as you know, we, on a tuition basis, bring regular education students into our preschool program. And those are not counted in the Chapter 70 formula. So the Governor is proposing as a way to enhance and enlarge and spotlight preschool to make that change. He's also recommending that the rates that are received for out-of-district tuitions be increased significantly. And with all of the formula changes that he's recommending, there's what I would call a hold harmless, meaning that regardless of how you fit into the formula, you won't ever receive a negative allocation on a year-to-year basis. But also, in fact, the increase on a year-to-year basis will not be less than $25 per student. And it is that $25 per student, which is pretty much what comprises the North Reading increase for next year. All of the other formula changes don't really benefit us because we are experiencing a modest decline in enrollment. So there isn't a lot to expect out of Chapter 70 for us. In fact, it's probably fair to say that most of the Governor's proposals are predicated upon fairly significant changes to the tax code, which may or may not receive the support of the General Court. As we know, the, I believe the sales tax would be decreased from 6 and 1/4 to 4 and 1/2.
Right.
And I believe the income tax was going, he's proposing it goes up from 5 and 1/4 to 6 and 1/4.
Right.
So that, my guess here is that that's going to be a controversial, difficult thing to do. And should those proposals be enacted, it's probably not going to be until the end of the fiscal year. You know, we're not going to know in April or May how people feel about that. So there's going to be, I think, a lot of indecisiveness about what kinds of funds we can receive from the state to support the town and school budgets in this budget year.
Yeah, I think we're going to, I think it's going to be a really late year in terms of us finding out. It wouldn't surprise me if we don't know by our town meeting in June because I think there's going to be a lot of controversy and changes to this budget proposal.
And that puts a lot of pressure on us because that means we have to go to town meeting with an estimate for what our state aid's going to be.
Right.
And the more conservative we are with that estimate, the tougher the budgeting becomes. So we'll have to make some decisions probably during March typically to decide what direction the town's going to move in.
Carl, will the, will we expect to receive more circuit breaker money if what the Governor's proposing for out-of-district tuitions is put into place?
The circuit breaker, I could also mention that he's suggesting a level funding of circuit breaker for FY14. And that's really, I would call that positive news.
Right.
Even though it doesn't mean a significant increase for us, because this year it was funded so liberally, to continue with that funding level is positive. We won't know how that will allocate out to North Reading until we determine our student demographics and then fit that into the formula. But the fact that it's going to be level funding would suggest to North Reading a, either a modest decrease or a modest increase, but not that consequential.
Any other questions, comments?
No. I'm attending the suburban coalition meeting on Wednesday. And there may be some other thought that comes out of that, make it some further direction, although we have pretty good sources here, so.
Bring anything back to our next meeting?
I'll bring it back.
Okay. All right. No staffing reports at this time?
None at this time.
No bids and donations to report?
None at this time.
Okay. Subcommittee reports. I see that the policy subcommittee met and we should be expecting Section I at the next school committee meeting.
Next school committee meeting.
Wow, these guys, they're up to I.
God bless them.
That's what I say.
We're going like crazy.
You're moving through it, I know.
We skipped around.
Yeah, but still.
We're almost done.
We actually went back to I, so we've gone through the entire policy manual.
Oh, great.
We do have a couple in J to take a look at.
Little, little bit more. We're almost there.
I'm glad you have chairman. I thought that was rumor number one. I've just got Super Bowl in my mind.
Yeah, Super Bowl one, exactly.
I don't anymore.
I know. And then we have subcommittee meetings coming up. We have finance planning team on Friday morning, athletics subcommittee on February 12th, policy subcommittee on February 12th. And we still need to set a date for evaluation subcommittee.
Now that we know the direction.
Probably the best way is just to email me and Cliff and-
Right. We were waiting for tonight's meeting and now we know what the charge is.
And anything for administrative report?
This, yes. Tonight, I distributed to you at the outset of the meeting, the North Reading High School informational report card. So a copy of that was at your place. And in addition, at previous meeting, Principal Bernard came and spoke about additions to the program of studies for next year. And just today, sent up the publication of the program of studies that will be distributed to students this week for the 2013-2014 school year. I encourage you to read through the options for students. They are quite impressive. And actually, when Mr. Bernard was meeting with the student representatives and me today, we were talking about how the options have grown for students. And the students actually remarked that when they first started going through some of this catalog and taking a look at what is offered at the high school, they were amazed that some of these classes were actually offered. They can't access them all because they can't possibly fit them into their schedules. But they were impressed with the number of choices that are available to them as students in the high school in North Reading.
I'm going to play the role of Michael on this one. Do we really need to be printing the, I'm wondering how much these books cost. Every single kid can get online. I don't understand-
What am I supposed to do with them?
Yeah, but you're not talking courses.
It's been done as an ebook.
An ebook. I mean, this guy, can we look into that in the future?
Absolutely.
Because I'm guessing this is, I mean, it's not thousands of dollars, but I'm guessing it's a fairly-
It's a fairly substantial amount.
Right.
So I will investigate the costs.
In fact, one of the things I'd like, and we don't have to get into tonight, but I'd like to take a look at all of the documents that we're publishing in hard copy and figure out which ones we can possibly do away with publishing them. Mr. Nelson?
Would you feel the same way about the FY14 budget booklets? You don't have to answer that question, but it's an interesting, I've thought about that year after year. Now, I do create PDF of it and I put it online, so the work's done. But the question is on this one, is does the general public deserve a copy? Because I put one in the library, things of that nature. Because that's-
I think in that case, it's such a small number. And you may have, you may have people that can't, you know, don't, and you may have people like Jerry who would never see the budget if we didn't print it in hard copy.
I'll remember, I'll bear it.
But I think, but I think when we're printing, we're probably printing 700, 800 of these, I assume, because it's going to every student, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's just a lot of printing and I'm not sure, I'm not sure we need to do that. So if we could look at those. I think, Carl, I would continue with the budget right now?
Yeah, okay.
But-
It's still an impressive book.
It is, extremely impressive. The courses are great and-
Put together really well.
And I think John continues to do a great job of bringing in new courses without additional staff and additional budget.
I would agree.
Critical. Okay. Anything else?
Correspondence.
Correspondents.
In your packet, there was a letter to members of the school committee from Mr. Gerald J. Gurry. And he was proposing an idea regarding improving safety at all North Reading public schools. You've had a chance to take a look at that letter.
Right.
And he did indicate that he was interested in knowing what you think regarding his suggestion.
I mean, I think his main suggestion was to use retired police officers for, the school district hire them as security at our schools. I think it's a great idea. The question would be looking at a cost for that and how, would they, would it be full-time? And I've always felt that there should be some security presence, not necessarily on a, you know, 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM basis, but on an occasional basis at our schools.
I'd actually thought of this back a month ago when the town thing happened, looking at either private security or retired police officers. And you would do it on a contract basis, not as an employee basis, you know. But that's obviously something the superintendent asked to include in her overall considerations of the safety of the school buildings, et cetera. It's a lot of different theories as to how this should be done and how it shouldn't be done, so.
Right. I mean, I think it's something that I would, I would ask the superintendent to speak with the police representatives that we work with. And I'm sure you've already discussed ideas, discussed ideas with them. But I think it's a good suggestion.
It is a good suggestion. I do want to let you know that I have been, starting last year, Chief Murphy and I, we're talking about the current structure of the SROs that we have assigned to our schools. And these are SROs in name because these are full-time patrol officers. But they have been assigned to the schools and make themselves available when principals need their expertise. So very soon, I'd like to bring forward to you an idea that we have been tossing around-
Great.
-that I believe the police chief will be proposing when he makes his budget presentation to the Board of Selectmen.
Great.
And I'm in full support of this proposal, but I would like to bring it back to you at the February meeting. And the chief of police has invited me to attend his presentation with him so we could co-present in collaboration.
Sounds good.
And I'm excited about that.
Good.
In addition, I received correspondence late this afternoon that I would just like to pass out to you at this particular time, but discuss at a future meeting. So if you could take a copy. This is a memorandum you had requested at the last school committee meeting when there was a presentation made by representatives of the North Reading Citizens for Equality. You had asked them to commit to paper what they were proposing in terms of remedial measures to ensure that North Reading High School is in compliance with Title IX. And so they have done that. And I received this via email this afternoon. And it comes in two parts. One, remedial measures necessary pending construction of a new high school. And two, remedial measures necessary upon completion of a new high school. So again, there's a lot to read here, even though it's just two pages long. And I'd like to propose that we revisit it at a future meeting.
Yeah, I briefly spoke with Kathy today about a couple of other items and we briefly touched on this. And I started reviewing this. And I think it's something we do have to meet on, I would say, before the, before the end of February or early March, before softball season begins. So-
It was serendipity. Today, I did reach out to contact Mrs. Vant, who had made the presentation to the school committee. And within one minute of my email going to her, she was also reaching out to the school committee and to me. So our emails crossed in virtual space, keeping in contact. And I let her know that we are continuing to study this, even though there is no new news at this particular time.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Our next meeting is Monday, February 11th, and that'll be at the Hood School. We'll receive our annual Hood School presentation. Then we'll be meeting on Monday, March 4th. And I believe on that night, Carl, you will be presenting the budget on the 4th.
That's right.
And then we have a meeting on the 11th at 7:00. It'll be a joint meeting with the school committee and the SSBC at Town Hall. And I believe we also would like to try to stay at Town Hall if we can get a meeting room. So we-
Yes.
We do have a meeting room?
Yes, we have reserved Room 5-
Okay.
-in the Town Hall for continuation of the school committee.
Yeah, and I think the main item, the main agenda item should be the budget that night. But anything else that has to go on. But I'd like to have, you know, have, if we want to have a follow-on discussion on the budget from March 4th.
Yes.
And-
And next week, I am going to propose, as we typically do, schedule a budget workshop for members of the school committee. So I have some dates in mind. I'd like to propose them after the preliminary budget is presented.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Accept a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Second?
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night.